The thing of the Personnel Committee to order. And there's one item on the agenda.
And the one item has been continued from several other meetings and the Chief Legislative Analyst has submitted reports as well as the Department of Transportation. This is in response to adopted budget recommendations relative to the hiring and deployment of part-time traffic officers. This item, by the way, has also been referred to Transportation and Budget and Finance Committees.
Okay, and I think we will start with the members of the public. And the first speaker will be Lorenzo Bressenio from Council District Eight, if I am pronouncing that right, to be followed by Darren McDaniel.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Lorenzo Bressenio, Council District Eight. Councilmember Parks has requested that the following be read into the record. It was the budget's direction to adopt fiscal year 2011-12 budget whereby DOT would hire 100 part-time traffic officers with salary savings from holding a number of full-time traffic officers' positions vacant. The part-time traffic officers who would not be eligible for pension and health care benefits would supplement existing staffing levels to enhance revenues through citation issuance at a lower cost than full-time employees. The program would be monitored during the fiscal year and evaluation of continuing the program would be made by mayor and council during consideration of fiscal year 2012-13 budget. This analysis was done prior to the inclusion of part-time positions into fiscal year 1112 budget. The money valued and rationale are unchanged. The primary goal is to hire the 100 part-time traffic officers so they can create approximately $9 million in general fund revenue. The $9 million will aid the city during the 1213 budget to maintain services and mitigate larger shortfalls. Councilmember Parks recommends that the committee adopt the CLA's recommendations and allow this program to be evaluated during this fiscal year and the results to be considered during the 2012-13 budget as directed by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren McDaniel from SEIU Local 721, to be followed by Christopher Funderberg, if I'm pronouncing that right, also from Local 721.
Hello, my name is Darren McDaniel. Good afternoon to the council. Appreciate you allowing me to speak. I've been a traffic officer for approximately 11 years and I speak on behalf of the full-time officers in saying that we're committed to the City of Los Angeles. We, as full-time officers, consider our positions to be a career and we want to generate revenue for the city because we believe that it, the city's success is our success. Currently, the full-time position is a position that is easily, it's always been a money, it's always paid for itself. I believe the statistic for a full-time officer, for every $1 that an officer brings in, he makes three. So officers are multifaceted. They know how to write high-revenue citations. And the current position for part-time is they're only limited to, I believe, writing only meter citations. So according to the budget, they were, it was supposed to be 100 officers. They currently are running on 41 and it's gonna, clearly it's gonna take a lot of time before they hire another set of officers to fulfill what the budget, what the budget had anticipated to make this $9 million. We're asking, so as we wait for the positions to be filled through the process, the city's losing money. So we're asking this committee to make the current part-time officers full-time now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Funderberg. I'm representing and speaking for all part-time traffic officers. When I originally first applied, I applied for a full-time position later on, not knowing that I was gonna get hired as a part-time. I'm dedicated and that's why I'm here as a law enforcement officer, to present myself to say, you know what? Why hire more when the part-timers now can do the same thing as full-timers out there in the field? It's a very high stressful position and to be labeled as a meter maid, coming in with this program, not having insufficient information on employee evaluations, how are we getting evaluated out there in the field, what are the things that we need to do to, you know, maybe become full-time or be terminated at any time dealing with the stressful job that we're doing? So I'm just here to represent and to let you guys know that as a part-timer, I think we can make a difference with being hired as full-time and fulfilling the jobs that, you know, the full-timers out there do instead of, instead of being labeled as a meter maid with insufficient information throughout the department on the training that we was rushed with, having, not really adequate supervision out there in the field and still writing high value number of tickets that we do. So I'm just letting you guys know that I think the program for us is to become full-time and that's why I'm here to represent the part-timers. Thank you.
Thank you. Kai Nagao, also from 721, to be followed by Jason Elias, also from 721.
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Kai Nagao and I'm with SEIU 721. We've had an opportunity to study the CLA reports that have been released since our last meeting. So we ran our numbers per month. I could submit it.
Your numbers correspond with the city numbers, I assume?
Yes, all our numbers are projected based on the CLA's numbers. There have been two revisions. One is based on the proportion of hours worked. After talking to the part-time employees, traffic officers, we discovered that they work the same proportional hours as the full-time. In addition, the fringe benefits, we adjusted to the cap rate for the DOT. So those were the two revisions. And I'd also like to note that for the average ticket citations, they're based on full-time tickets. And as we know, full-time traffic officers write higher revenue tickets. So that number would be higher for the full-time officers than the part-time officers. So those numbers can be skewed a little bit because of that, because they're based on $62 per ticket. When we ran the monthly comparison, comparing a part-time officer to a full-time officer, it was, it actually shows that a full-time officer generates more revenue for the city, close to a quarter million per month. And as you know, we've been talking about this program for the part-time officers, but it's only functioning at 41% right now. There's only 41 part-time officers and it looks like they wouldn't be able to hire more until the program mid-January or sometime in January. So it's already half a year where we're not getting close to the $9 million that is needed for the city's revenue. So.
Do you have anything else?
I would just add that, you know, for the part-time program, some of the challenges has, that it's not, the part-time officers are unclear about their probationary period, opportunities for promotion, there's a lot of unclarity. Supervision has been an issue. They had a lot of supervision in the beginning, but now there's not enough support and if you hire additional 60 officers, there's gonna be additional costs in supervision too. So we feel that in terms of some of the estimates that have been done on this, they haven't included all the different considerations of cost. Also, part-time officers are available for comp time. So there are certain things that we feel have not been included when comparing full-time and part-time employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Elias.
Just in the nick of time, Councilmembers, apologize down in Inglewood, actually, talking about maybe bringing your processing, ticket processing over to Inglewood, that might be a good idea. At any rate, I don't want to repeat what Kay talked about, I've talked countless times in front of this committee about this issue. The bottom line, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating, the program's running at 41% of capacity. There are issues we are working with the department on and want to continue to work with Department of Transportation on productivity, efficiencies, revenue and cost-saving. But we feel that every day that we don't have full-time traffic officers out on the street is a day that we're potentially losing revenue. So we're asking the council, you know, and there's been CAO's numbers, the CLA's numbers, our numbers, and we're not so far apart on several issues, but, but we do feel that given the fact that this program has had a chance to get off the ground, we're asking that you give us a chance by converting these officers immediately to full-time and see if we can't do something about meeting the revenue target for this particular budget item. So, you know, again, I'll stop there. I won't use all of my time because I'm sure I'm repeating what Kay said and what I've said countless times and we hope that you'll take it under consideration and take action today.
Thank you. If we could get a report from staff, CLA, CAO, on your thoughts on this and the supplemental report.
Well, we've distributed a copy of our supplemental report, which complies with the request of the chair to conduct a calculation of the costs and the potential revenues that could be generated if the current 41 part-time traffic officers are converted to full-time. And I'll just go with the bottom-line figures, you know, rather than going into the details of the calculation. The net revenue that would be generated by 41 full-time traffic officers would be 6.2 million. Our calculation relative to doing an apples-to-apples comparison with part-time is to calculate the number of part-time traffic officers needed to issue an equivalent number of citations by 41 full-time and that's approximately 240,000. So on the basis of our calculation, 71, I'm sorry, 75 part-time traffic officers would issue an equivalent number of citations. However, because of the lower cost for part-time traffic officers, the net revenue gain for the city would be approximately 1.5 million.
Mr. Stein, do you have any questions?
I have a whole bunch of them.
And then I have a motion to suggest.
Concept versus reality. You have the concept of 100, there's 41. Why didn't we get 100? Which was, what was proposed?
The reason that there are only 41 part-time is because the department certified the eligible list. Based on the individuals that responded to the certification and based on the background investigation that was completed, 43 were offered jobs. My understanding is that two of them left. I'm not sure whether currently there's 40 or 41 that are still on staff, but at the time that we were requested to conduct the calculation, 41 were still on the payroll.
But the budget called for 100.
Correct. And I think at that time, there was the assumption that the eligible list that was in existence at that time would be sufficient in order to hire the 100. Given the fact that there are only 41 that are on staff, the Personnel Department has started the examination for a new eligible list. The new eligible list should be available at the end of December or early January and at that time, the department's intention is to hire as many as part-timers as they can from the eligible list.
But how many were on the eligible list when we started this process?
I don't know.
You know?
I just said that question to the office.
Because we, we.
There were hundreds. I mean, there were.
Okay. My recollection was it was at least a couple hundred.
So if there were a couple hundred and we end up with 41 or 43, where are the rest of them? Because there's a whole bunch of people looking for jobs. I'm sure there was a list, an extensive list. I'm trying to figure out, that's what I talk about, the concept versus reality. The concept was, we're gonna hire 100. We less, have less than that. We're almost, well, now we're in October, almost through the end of October and they're gonna do maybe tests in December and by the time that's done, it'll be February and then we start July, a new fiscal year. So the concept may have had merit, but the reality is, it didn't measure up. Full-time versus part-time. Full-time responsibilities versus part-time responsibilities. I understand the part-time have restricted responsibilities. They don't have the same ability to cite as the full-time folks. Is that correct? So they don't have the same capacity of generating dollars.
Well.
Now here we come up, they're coming up, the experts. So, capacity, full-time, part-time.
Rudy Karosko, LA DOT. Councilmember, the part-time traffic officers have been trained to issue all citations. Their current responsibility is focused primarily on meter enforcement. Therefore, they're deployed on footbeats and meterbeats in their current deployment scheme. But they have the ability to issue all citations.
Okay. Are there any restricted duties that they have?
They have not been provided with traffic control training.
So they're not directing traffic?
That is correct.
Which doesn't generate dollars, it costs dollars?
That is correct.
What about impaling vehicles, stolen vehicles, parked vehicles in tow-away zones? The anti-grid lock that we have?
No, sir, they're not currently trained for that and we don't deploy them in any of our anti-grid lock.
All they're restricted to is riding at the meters.
They're, they are trained to write citations.
You have it at meters?
At meters and anything else.
Air plugs?
Yes, sir.
Red zones?
Red zone.
Handicap, et cetera?
That's correct.
Okay, so the capacity is somewhat restricted. What about the uniform? Is it the same uniform?
No, sir. They, they currently are, wear black uniform pants along with a LA City polo shirt that designates them as LA City employees, along with safety vest, which designate them as traffic officers.
Okay. And how long is the training for the part-time?
We provide them with two weeks' worth of classroom training and then we monitor their field training. They have a training officer assigned to them for the first two weekends that they're in the field. And at that point, the training officer then makes determination as to their, their ability, as to whether or not we're able to let them loose on their own.
And the ones that were hired, have we lost any or are they still all employed?
We've only, those that have been deployed, we deployed 41 traffic officers and we've only lost one.
And why was that?
He was, I believe he was terminated.
What's the mission of the Department of Transportation?
To ensure the movement of traffic.
And money is secondary.
That's correct.
And the $9 million was projected and in reality, what are we gonna receive if this 41 plays out through the fiscal year? We were anticipating $9 million in revenue. So with the 41, what are we anticipating?
Well, I mean, well, given the fact that we're only in October, we still have the ability to hire additional officers beginning in January.
Yeah, but that.
So we don't really know.
April, May, June, six months.
Right. And, and.
Well, based upon what we have, because we're supposed to get 100, we got 41, but based upon what we currently have in hand, not that we may get in December, January, the $9 million would come down to how much?
You know, I don't have information from DOT in terms of the total number of citations that have been issued by the part-timers.
Because like a handicap violation's expensive, red zone versus anti-grid lock, I mean, there's all types of different fine structures, from the low end to the high end. I think handicap is the most expensive.
That's correct.
Okay. So.
The majority of the citations that are issued, excuse me, are, they fall in a, in a range. The majority, we issue approximately 25% to 26% of our citations are street cleaning, 24 to 20, 23 to 24% of our citations are meter enforcement.
And the officers are involved in street cleaning enforcement and meter enforcement?
Currently, currently, they're only involved in meter enforcement.
So who's doing street cleaning enforcement?
We're full-time officers.
Why wouldn't we put them on street cleaning enforcement?
We intend to.
But we haven't done it yet.
Not yet.
What are we waiting for?
We're providing them with adequate training.
How much training does it take? If it says, "street cleaning" and they're parked there, I mean, I was only a motor cop, so I thought it was pretty simple, write a ticket.
That's correct. And the current beat configuration.
I'm sorry, motor sergeant. Thank you. All right.
Yes, sir. The current beat configuration involves meter enforcement. It's their primary focus because they're on footbeats currently.
They don't have cars.
Not currently.
How do they get to their location?
We, we transport them and what we do is we transport them, two to a car, we drop them off. But as we migrate through this process, we intend to provide them with additional training and additional responsibilities. Currently, part-time traffic officers only deployed Friday evenings, all day Saturday and all day Sunday.
Three days a week.
That's correct.
Kind of like 412 plan.
Oh.
312 plan. 312 plan. That's what the officers work, 312, 12 hours a day. How many hours do they work on those three days?
They're assigned to five-hour shifts. They're on patrol for four hours.
And do they have communication with anyone?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So there is some safety gap there or some safety measure. How many full-time openings do you have right now?
Mike Williams, DOT, 59, as I recall. That was the last count as of last week, Councilmember.
Okay. And what are we doing about filling those?
Well, currently, as was stated by the CLA, we're going through the process of developing an eligibility list. As, as you are acutely aware, we cannot hire anyone for DOT or any other department without permission from the Managed Hiring Committee.
Right.
So our intention is to pursue that. We've had discussions about that, doing that. And again, it's not going to be up to DOT management as to whether or not we hire full-timers, but we will make that attempt to fill those, to fill those full-time positions.
We currently have 59 full-time openings. There's 41 part-timers who have been partially trained, who have some knowledge and exposure to what the department responsibilities are. And we're gonna do testing and try and get a list up in December or January. Wouldn't it seem logical that the folks that we already have on board, they're good enough for part-time, we could make them full-time if Managed Hiring would accept that?
Yeah, we've discussed that. We've had a discussion as recently as last week with, with SEIU. That has not been vetted as to how that process is gonna work. That's a process that will have to be vetted by Personnel Department, simply because we're gonna have to decide upon a matrix as to who is gonna be number one, who's gonna be number two as far as full-timers are concerned. But that, those are discussions we'll be having with, with Personnel Department as well as with the unions.
Okay, because it's logical that if we're gonna fill them, we fill them with people who are already there. It's like if we had full capacity and we didn't have any openings. So, I mean, when I'm looking at this whole picture, additional training, we've got people who are dedicated, they've been here, only one left through either their own means or some other means. To me, it seems logical that we would try to get as many people on board, not only to help the job market, but to help generate the revenues that were promised in the budget. And it doesn't look like we're gonna get those dollars that were anticipated in the budget that Representative from Councilmember Parks discussed. And I know that we've got, other than you, Commander, how many other LAPD folks currently assigned to DOT?
In my staff, there are three and I'm the fourth one, so there's four of us.
Four LAPD assign?
Correct.
Okay. And how long does that plan to be?
We suspect that our assignment will end somewhere in November.
Now, would those positions then become DOT positions?
No, sir. They're, those positions are, it's a loan. We're not charging DOT for those positions. They did not come out of DOT's TO.
But are those positions that DOT would need within their command?
No.
Are they doing, they would do without that?
No, no. We simply are providing support and advice and helping to establish some, some direction as to what we need to do in the way of personnel issues and discipline, productivity and what have you. But once we leave, we will be available to DOT. But again, those positions are not coming out of their, their table of organization.
Okay. And I just want to commend you, because I've known you for many years and your command through the years with LAPD have a phenomenal reputation for getting the job done.
Well, thank you.
Whether it's on the ground or in the air, from your support operations, so I commend you for that.
Well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. And I appreciate the CLA's work and DOT's work on this issue. While there's some disagreement on the exact budget impact of hiring additional traffic officers, particularly full-time officers, there seems to be agreement on one fact, which is, full-time traffic officers make money for the city for every hour that they're out on the streets. It's been argued that they make $3 for every dollar we spend. I don't know exactly what the, what the real numbers are, but there's no question that they do the job and we make additional revenue at the same time. Part-time traffic officers make money too. Some argue that they make more, more in revenue per person, per hour, whatever. But since there's nothing we can do to increase the number of traffic officers part-time anytime soon, from the sound of it, it'll be at least another three months before we're able to add more. I think the only thing that makes sense is to increase our net revenue and reduce our deficit this year by making the 40 part-timers full-time. It would off, it would add some additional costs. That cost would be more than offset by the additional revenue that we earn. And I think the differential may actually be less between part-time and full-time officers' costs because as it was said, full-time officers can be more productive, they can issue more higher-quality and higher-value tickets than part-time officers. I think there's also some hidden costs in a part-time workforce and increased supervision, possibly increased absenteeism. I think we need to monitor those issues closely over the next few months to try to come up with more exact figures. But I think in any event, the answer today is to help the city reduce its deficit by bringing in more revenue and by hiring these positions full-time. They will not only bring in more revenue, but they'll also do the job at the same time. So I would therefore move that we authorize DOT to convert the 40 part-time positions currently on staff to 40 full-time positions. Do we have a second?
I'll second and add that with managed hiring, these folks have been hired under the managed hiring process, I assume, the part-time. I don't know how cumbersome it is to convert it from part-time and get them a different uniform to full-time. And if you didn't have the 59 openings, there'd be an argument against bringing those folks on, but you've got 41 and 59 openings for full-time positions. And I think that has to be taken into consideration that to bring you up to the authorized strength of 59, these folks have partial training, some experience, additional training and a different uniform, and their capacity can be broadened out to generate more revenue and to keep more streets moving smoothly. So I think coupled with the dollars that we anticipate, the $9 million, which I don't think's gonna happen, coupled with the fact that you got 59 full-time openings and they're gonna be testing to fill those, you've already got folks who obviously want a job, they've been partially trained, they wanna work, only one is no longer with us. I think it's common sense that we bring those folks on board, whatever process, if it's through managed hiring or some other modified process, because managed hiring is very cumbersome, but they're already City employees to some extent. So I would second the motion with the, the conditions that we have available positions now. And whoever comes out down the road with testing. now and whoever comes out down the road with testing, if we want to continue a part-time program after we get to that, we can cross that bridge when we come to it. But even if you took the 41, you're still going to have additional positions for full-time personnel. So, I would second the motion. Again, what was projected isn't going to happen, the $9 million, what was projected, we'd have 100, we don't have. So, I think in all benefit to people who are looking for a job, the revenues and keep traffic moving, it's common sense to hire, or not hire, but to convert those to full-time positions. That would be second on your motion.
And I'd add to my motion based on what you just said, if there's a, a way for personnel to look at a less cumbersome process than going through the managed hiring process, I think we should look at that as well, at least encourage managed hiring to be open to creating a, a less cumbersome process to allow these folks to move from part-time to full-time.
If I might, councilmembers, we'll certainly do whatever the full council directs us to do.
This will go to full council and budget and finance to full council.
Yes, sir.
But the fact is, you do have an authorized strength, you're short 59, they are going to be testing to hire 59. I mean, it seems like a logical sequence. You take the folks that we've already gone through testing and already have a, a part-time job, obviously desire to work full-time. If some don't want to work full-time, that obviously leaves openings for other folks, but I think it's logical that we pursue that matter. And I don't know if there's ever been, Mr. Sines, if we've ever done any other than through the managed hiring process, which is cumbersome, time-consuming, sometimes ineffective and efficient. If we've had a situation, we've converted, if there's expedited process for a conversion as we're looking at this particular situation, or does that have to go through that full managed hiring process?
Managed hiring is the money side of the House and that's not us. That's the CAO, the CLA and the mayor's office sit on the managed hiring committee. So, even if personnel could be as expeditious as possible, we couldn't help with that process. Yes, there's a number of, of ways we could work with the department to try to expedite, which we've been doing now with this list. It's, it's an extensive selection process as it should be, so that's why it takes a little longer, but we've begun the process and we'll certainly have a list available by, by December, late December.
But we could assume that the folks that have already been hired under part-time would be qualified and eligible for full-time, that they've completed backgrounds and this and that, that we wouldn't have to do an extensive background since they're already wearing that uniform and doing enforcement.
There's been a combination of a background done by both the Personnel Department and the, and the Transportation, I'm sorry, I see the Police Department when I see you, and the Transportation Department. The, the new process that we're going to have that was much more extensive.
But these folks are already on, so I find.
They're on. They passed a civil service examination and as intermittent appointments, limited background that the department did, not what we'll be doing with a new list.
Let me ask a question. If we're concerned about waste, fraud and abuse.
Correct.
And the values of the city civil service system, you would think we'd do a thorough investigation and not have to bring them back. What's the difference of a part-time write-your-ticket or a full-time write-your-ticket? We should have the same value system when we do the background check.
Actually, what I'm saying is we've improved the process for the civil service list for both background and part-time since 2009. It's a, it's an improved process in 2011 and I completely agree with you. Some of the issues that have come forth recently have caused us a great deal of concern about backgrounds and.
If you watch the investigative reports on local news stations, there's more embarrassing situations coming forward, very embarrassing with city employees.
I think it's the most important part of the process. I agree with you.
It is.
And Councilmember Carrance, I need to tell you, you were absolutely right. 228 people were on that eligible list.
Oh, okay. And it, to be, I guess to be qualified is not that easy.
Well, 228 people were put on the list in, in 2009.
disqualified or just on the list?
Quali, well, they had not passed the, the more thorough background.
Okay.
They, they passed the initial, we checked through prints for convictions, so that part, they had passed.
Okay.
But the department did more extensive background than that.
And the rest of them fell out because of background?
No, not entirely. Some people find other employment over the course of two years.
And councilmembers, some of the candidates declined the position because of other commitments that they had. They weren't eligible or able to work those part-time hours. In terms of the background, the background, as Phyllis or Ms. Sines stated, is more thorough this time around. We did de-select a number of individuals that caused us some great concern in terms of whether or not we'd be comfortable having them as city employees and those people were disqualified. So, with a combination of the, the more thorough background and the, some folks declining the position, we winnowed it down to those 43 people.
Do we have any idea, by the way, how many people declined because it was a part-time job when they were really looking for a full-time work?
Councilmember, I don't know. We, I'm certain Personnel Department, you probably perhaps get that information, but I don't know.
We would get that information from the DOT personnel. We, once we certify a list, the department HR staff handles the, the rationale that people provide, so we can certainly try to get that from the HR staff at DOT.
Yeah, I wouldn't slow anything down for that information, but it would certainly be of, of interest.
And the difference in salary from full-time to part-time, is it $4 an hour difference? I read.
For, for part-time, it's 1643 and full-time, it starts up at 2047.
Twenty what?
Forty-seven. Twenty dollars and forty-seven cents.
So, it's $4, little over $4 difference between full-time and part-time. So, it's not like double.
All right. All right, well, without objection, this item will be passed.
Objection, what objection?
Well, it can't be objections from the two of us because we're both on the motion. But, so that passes unanimously and we are now adjourned.